Yeah. Truly.
We are live on YouTube. I'm Charlie Dever, not insulting anybody.
No, they're not. Put them on the gas.
A part of that for access, I believe we clearly have none, except that councillor Atmet is still online. So she can have a vote where she can participate in the discussion.
She has sent apologies for this meeting.
Okay, so he has sent apologies for this meeting.
Looking clear that she's not.
A data item two, declarations of interest. Do we have any doubt?
To use a pitch I think we should just say that we are members of the Buckinghamshire Council on the agenda they're discussing. Our party judge for them, but we are not making a decision. That's just the point that we are.
Yes, at which we might, but thank you. Yes, so in that case there are four people.
Yeah, just to deny our prejudice, which is that we are it, should be noted.
Yes, and should be noted that four of us are Buckinghamshire councils and one of the items relates to one of their decisions. Thank you. Then item number three is OZI Way Phase One amended plans to discuss and agree a response to the amended plans for this application and to receive the plan clerk's report on the changes. Mark.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councillor Cole, don't be the informal now.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we have before us tonight the latest amendments, the reserve matters, that is the detailed applications. Phase one of the four hundred and twenty dwelling OZI Way development. Outline permission's already been given for all four phases, of which a hundred and forty seven dwellings, that thirty five percent will be affordable. But this application for us tonight is just for the first one hundred and twenty one dwellings. Before I present with the details, I should make this council aware that development work has already started on both phases one and two, even before all the conditions have been met. Thirteen of those conditions have yet to be met on phase one, and one of the most important, which is condition fourteen regarding drainage, states quite clearly, development shall not begin until a surface water drainage scheme for the site has been submitted to and approved in writing by the local authority. That hadn't happened. Members may be aware that since the commencement of this allegedly unauthorised work, Top Angel has twice been flooded this month by water coming off the fields above, draining away through the industrial estate and down towards Meadway. Regarding phase two, for which reserve matters application has yet to be made, trees have already been felled and hedges grabbed out. Buckingham Town Council has advised enforcement of both alleged breaches and we await its response. But back to the amended plans, you've all seen Catherine's very comprehensive report. Thank you Catherine for that.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, this is an amended detailed application, but despite what people might think, they are not minor amendments. These are major amendments. Um, just going very briefly through what she said, we should note the affordable housing, um, there's much of an improvement now. There's no tenure blindness that there was before. So there's a mixture of some of the sixteen dwellings here, ten dwellings there. Um, so we have no problem with that for the moment, but what we do have a big problem with is waste and recycling strategy. There are nine places that the bin lorry can't reach and residents will have to haul their bins to inform the collection point. We say as a town council that refuse should be collected from houses. People shouldn't have to collectively walk them two hundred yards to it and leave them in an overnight point. This this goes against everything that we'd been working for over the years. Um, landscape and urban design, um, sign code emphasises the need for a notable uplifting character. And local planning authority says this has not yet been fully achieved, nor has attention being paid. The Buckingham vernacular, which is in our vision and design statement. Criticism is made of all the roof shapes, corner styles, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the surface water drainage features are too angular. There should be more natural shapes. You'll see all this in Catherine's report. Anglian Water has said they don't per se have a problem, um, although they've found that the proposed method of surface water drainage does not relate to any anglian water-owned acid. And they say the Environment Agency should be consulted if the drainage system directly or indirectly involves the discharge of water into a water course. I've just told you tonight, that's exactly what's happening even before permission's been given. Should the proposed method of water surface management change to include interaction with angier water, we would wish to be reconsulted and to ensure an effective surface water drainage strategy is prepared and implemented. And the officers note that as well, uh, as being an objection to this, um, application at the moment. Um, I've told you about the surface water drainage problems and that the conditions, particularly fourteen are in the original application, don't form part of this, but the developers have jumped the gun allegedly. Um, we showed, I mentioned recycling and waste trees. Tree officers say the trees in the plan are not acceptable. The applicant has failed to address previous comments. Overall size and growth patterns of trees have not been adequately considered. There's an overall lack of street trees and too many of macheris. And the importance of incorporating underground rooting apparatuses has been ignored. So trees may not be, may not thrive, and the tree officers want a lot more details on that. Street scenes, we had a complaint about this, that they were too much. Unfortunately, since September twenty three, um, there's been no change at all, despite the developers in this application putting in in January twenty twenty four, a revised plan. And all of us have looked at it. None of us can see any difference between that. So because of all the above, I'm going to formally propose that this council continues to object to this application until the developers meet all, meet everything that's demanded by the local planning authority and we are supporting the local planning authority then. Thank you.
I'm not going to be handed it.
Thank you. Um, yeah, the issue about the bins is that they're not taken into consideration, they're totally with access boards and facilities and accessible issues. Um, maybe they're seeing that. It does, it does, it does. Still, it's right, I can imagine. If you know, partly been.
Thank you. How are you? Councillor Southall.
Yeah, I'm. Thank you, um, Catherine and Mark for such a detailed this loss to this application firstly, which rather makes much of the discussion easier. I have, um, been in discussions about the enforcement issue today as well, and I, um, am on and I am being discussions up to far past five about the um, because, um, it was councillor Mark Cole who first contacted me, made me aware of it. And for that I'm grateful. And I think Catherine also made me aware of it in the office. What what what's happened is they've started certain works before the material conditions have been agreed. Um, and now, um, I wish them to follow that up in a material way because this is a large application and, um, where is, the thing is about this application which I've been questioning, and I think, I remember when we spoke to this application, the town council councillor Mark Cole made the point that he said tonight the things that he actually raised, um, in his limited three minutes, um, when he presented to the application. I spoke at the meeting to the application, um, and picked the areas which Mark has not spoken to. Um, but I I remain very concerned because the drainage of this site, which I questioned in the previous meeting, and I gave you the information around the legalities of how drainage works, which was from the then, um, head of planning, which he gave to an answer to councillor Martin Test, a cabinet which are public records. We are in a situation here that we do really need to understand how this site drains. It is prejudicial not only to, as councillor Cole rightly said, to, um, other people. I'm un- I'm unsure whether the, um, survey drainage of this site is, is clearly defined. And if it's defined in a temporary way, that could become a permanent feature of the development as it grows out. What we are aware is that there's been issues with the main body of the drainage between, um, beneath it, which, um, it seems. So we do need to get this sorted out and also our correspondent, and the only reason I can speak on this because it's a strategic site application, I don't need to not speak on it. Um, I'm also concerned about the possibility of young people getting from this estate um, in advance of it done, because many of the things that were put in, whether we thought they were slight improvements, won't go in on the first phase. So the fact as I understand it, and we need to be assured that the pedestrian access and the and the children get from this site across the London Road and how they get out of it is actually um, put in at the earlier stage because the estate with the, may be built over a number of years. It may be built quickly. That's dependent on the economy and how people purchase houses. And it could be that the third phase, when it's constructed, is there quite a long time. The idea that children would walk down out of this state, um, down past um, through the industrial estate where there's no footway, um, onto the road and then be sub shipped to the vehicles flying around for the industrial estate, um, would would put fear into me really, because we raised these points, both councillor Cole and I did, at the onset of the planning meeting when it was agreed.
So the three minutes are up if people come to.
Um, those points are the main points. I'm sure other members have, but we've got to consider the wellbeing of the community and the wellbeing of the children, because if we don't do that now, and it so it happens afterwards, we'll regret it all basically.
Thank you. Councillor Ralph.
Thank you. Um, I just want to formally second the motion that councillor Cole put up.
Thank you. Councillor Howard.
Yeah, I I was ever just tired today, um, and I noticed that there's a bunch of trees that have just been chopped down. Um, I'm looking on the map here on the Northern Survey, man. It would seem to me that those trees were actually very close to watercourses. Now, we all know what trees do. They drink water, and those trees are no longer there. So a whole mountain that was covered with trees and undergrowth has just been chopped away. I didn't see the reason for that anyway, because I'm sure no bad interacts. But the the Shire Council needs to rein this to fully believe now, and I mean now. Because they're starting to to destroy our public side and destroy the environment. They need to be told, you do need to find a book. You've got enough of people just doing what they want because it's in their financial or commercial interests. They need to be handed in now.
Thank you. Councillor Ralph. Um, this is no one's son. Yeah, yeah. Um, just to say that there's the little, um, that the trees that has the brook down the bottom of OZI Way development, and I go down that quite often, it's a nice place to go. And I've noticed since they, um, built, um, dug that gateway through, since they've taken the trees up, like the water level is visibly rising. And that's just a small area. You've got so many houses already at the other side, which last year, I think it was last June, we had that, I mean, it was a freak rainstorm, but so many houses on Meadway flooded and were under like a foot of water. They needed to pump themselves again. And all we're doing is opening the pe- opening the residents that already live in Buckingham up to more flooding and more kinds of conditions to live in. And I just, yeah, I agree with what everyone says, that this development or the these developers need to be rounded in, brought to task. We're not saying no to the development. We're just saying do it along the agreement that has been agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Ralph.
Yeah, in line with the all the other councillors really, um, I mean, really disagreement with all of this. It's both planning and contract creepage, which we've seen before. I hate it when they do that. We need to have a consistent planning application, which has got the detail so we can review it and give a, a decision therefore upon it, not the creepage that we see. And just recently, we've seen different sorts of, um, rainfall. We've had short sharp, uh, downpours which just run off the land. And then recently, we've had long steady rainfalls that have just soaked the land, and then any more rain then just runs off top of that. So it's it's really, uh, showing up a big problem that's going to alarm us. And I I think from memory, the land slopes towards the road there, does it? So anything coming off of that, and there's gonna, you know, unless they put in a good drainage system, there's a lot of hard standing and, uh, and areas that it can't soak through. So it's all naturally, uh, the company is going to have a lot, um, across the road of water seeping down there if they don't sort it. Thank you.
It sounds to me like, you know, the views are all going in a similar direction, so therefore councillor Cole could ask you to repeat what the motion was and so that we can move to a vote. You can say something if you like.
Oh, wait, yeah, just very, very simply that we oppose this, the amendments to this application, um, in view of the number of objections that, uh, the local planning authority is still raising to their amendments and that we are fully behind the local planning authority in supporting this objection.
This has been seconded by councillor Ralph, so I'm going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Oh, actually, I think, no, I think we can still hold, can't we, even on the. And yes, any, any against or abstentions? Yeah, we have two abstentions. Which then bring us to my partner Flages. To receive a report from the compliance and projects manager. So he's obviously not here.
Yes, yeah, thank you, ma'am. Um, yes, this is actually a recommendation from the planning committee, um, which I'll present to you. Um, this our response to the raising revenue to balance council budgets, including contribution from on and off street parking where appropriate, is that this council should oppose the proposed changes to the reasons set out here. Um, first of all, the legality of what they're doing. Um, the coun- this council understands where such amendments are proposed, a full public consultation must take place. There was an amended order posted in the advertiser in during January, but it was not a consultation. It's only a notice inviting any objections in writing, a note not a full consultation. This fee was supported by councillor Broadbent on the eighth of January at the budget scrutiny meeting, when he confirmed that though charges could be varied as desired, any change to the tariff structure, including hours when charges replicable, would require a full public consultation. We're still waiting for that. Budgetary evaluation, there appears to be no evidence from the economic development on the pros and cons of raising revenue by extending the chargeable hours and days to seven days a week. Um, the economy, this council believes the proposals have had a dire effect on the economy of Buckingham Town Centre, on the shops, businesses and venues. Um, the displacement of existing parking, we believe the proposals will lead to more parking on residential streets in the surrounding estates. Regarding public events and local democracy, public attendance and participation in town and council events is strong. This could be adversely impacted by these proposals, public events including Remembrance Sunday, ban jam, Christmas light switch on, Christmas parade, both chartered first. And Buckingham Community Centre Trust could also be adversely affected when taking bookings if it's going to lead to increased costs because of the earlier parking hours, um, starting, well, not ending till seven in the evenings. Local democracy, the annual town meetings held at six thirty on Thursday, meetings like this are seven o'clock. So the councillors and public have to pay outside before we can connect them. Post parking charges at the new Winslow Station, we've also noted a much higher than other local stations. This will have a negative impact on the number of people who choose to take the train rather than driving. Um, general observations that the north and south of the county have different demographics when considering off-street car parking and harmonising the periods over the whole county takes no account of the difference between the commuter belt and market towns such as us, which have no rail service, a scant bus service, and of course, all the villages around us who need access to our shops and other services where residents have no alternative to car use. So Buckingham Town Council's view is that the overall effect is extremely likely to significantly damage the Buckingham Town Centre economy by driving people away from the town centre to out-of-town free parking, increase on-street parking on adjacent roads and residential estates, and reduce public participation in town events in local democracy. And for all those reasons, I propose that we demand that there should be a full consultation for any of these charges or inputs. Thank you.
My head. Councillor Ralph.
I would second that very much.
Thank you. Councillor Ralph.
Um, I'd just like to say on, um, what councillor Cole said about the differences between the northern and south of the county. And the word of comment was made that, um, promises in, um, one of the other towns in the south of the county were more expensive per hour than the ones in Buckingham. However, that particular town also has a large shopping centre, um, a large supermarket in the town centre with two hours free parking. We don't have that benefit in Buckingham, and I think by saying there should be blanket, um, car parking charges across the county is ludicrous and it strives, all it does is, um, drive division between people and search pits against each other, when what we should be doing is finding a way to make this work for everyone and finding a way to make this work so that towns can still flourish. Because there's no point filling the county council pockets with money if there's no one to park in the town. You know, if raised park, raised car parking charges only work if people park there. And the amount of people that have said publicly on Facebook, well, I just won't park there then, I'll see if I can get kids, I'll just go somewhere else. So not only will they not be achieving their aim of raising funds, but they'll also be killing off the town's economy. Um, so yeah, okay.
Thank you. So we have quite a few people who wish to speak. I think I've got the order right. So councillor Howard first.
Um, I I think I think a couple of points really. One is, um, by all means, we should perhaps, um, standardise car parking charges across the county, but can we be connected to the London Underground, um, system as part of that? Because obviously we're not, whereas in far southern Buckinghamshire are. Um, and that, well, it's not comfortable to say that it should be set across the county. Secondly, it isn't just the economy. It's about the life of the community, it doesn't matter, yeah. You know, if people don't come into the town because they have to, um, you know, pay in ways that they are not paying particularly on Sundays and back on Mondays, that's going to affect the life of the town itself, our sense of community. Um, and thirdly, I would say, you know, this just shows that the town council ought to be in charge of car parking, not the Shire Council, because we care about our town way more than the Shire Council.
Thank you. Councillor Osiboden.
Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, well. I have opposed this increase in car parking charges, but my concern is with regards to the recommendation and the draft that has been put forward. Now, when councillor Cole was making his submission, he he did emphasise full public consultation. I assume there must be a set standard he's working towards, because from my understanding as of the eighteenth of January, there had been a post, or eighteenth or twenty-third of January to be specific. The share council had put forward for consultation, this amendment. I'm also aware that that consultation ended on the eighteenth of February, whilst the consultation permitted anybody who had any views on this amendment or on these alterations to have their say. But various mediums. So I will suggest that the council looks at that draft again, particularly the paragraph titled legality. Legality and scrutiny. But I do not believe the facts in there are accurate. I believe the share council had, as at the twenty-third of January, put out for full, for public consultation. I don't know what the full is. So as well, councillor Mark, councillor Cole would aid us, but I can't remember what he means by full public consultation, because there had been consultation. And that was still on the eighteenth, before we approve this law.
If I may, I will take, and you can come back without our thought, but do you want to come back to this?
I could come back, no, it's councillor, but I did raise that, I did say in my piece that, yes, there was a notice posted in the advertiser on the twenty-fourth of January saying that there's an amended order and anyone who wanted to um, post any objection could do so in writing, and that ran from the twenty-fourth of January to the eighteenth of February. We've got a copy of the notice, so we know what it says. It was in the advertiser in the smallest print you could possibly see, but there was no consultation suggested. It was purely asking for any objections to an amended order. They had to be made in writing. If you wanted to see what the plans were, you had to go down to Walesby to look at them. So that's where we were. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll see.
I just come back and put it on that. The point there is, yes, whilst the letter says the advertising, as a matter of fact, it was on the website of the council from the twenty-fourth of January and ended on the eighteenth of February. That's what I'm saying. That it's not just the advertisement. It was on the website of the council.
Okay, so everybody's, um, is happy for councillor Davis to go next. I think it's a big problem for our trust.
Um, I've, I've, thank you, President. Um, I've spoken to quite a few people, um, about this, um, um, online, um, thing. The, the, um, the information available in it wasn't accurate in any way whatsoever. So therefore, I don't see that there can be any legality to it as a, as a, as a online legal consultation because, um, there was, there was nothing about the, um, it was, it was clear as mud really, because it, all you could see on the Cornwall's Meadow Car Park um, was it was going to be one pound seventy all day. It didn't say what the charge was per hour. Um, and we, I've, I've had to explain to a lot of people that, um, that one pound seventy is the charge that was, um, being proposed for Sundays and bank holidays for all day. Um, there was very, it was, it was woolly if, if, um, at, at best and, um, and definitely unclear. Thank you.
Okay, I will now try and take it in order. Councillor Ward, you was, had his hand out quite some time ago.
Um, I was on a, a parking survey panel, uh, at the autumn of last year when we looked at parking, uh, charges and enforcement offices throughout Buckinghamshire. And it came up about kind of harmonised charges throughout Buckinghamshire, which I said was totally wrong. Because Buckingham is not the same as a community town such as Highwickham, Amersham or Aylesbury. Buckingham is somewhere where people come into work to shop. You want to track people in. They don't come into parks to catch the train, because there isn't one. Um, and I was totally against the introduction of charges on the Sunday and extending the hours, because I said, how many people have to come into park at seven o'clock in the morning in Buckingham? You know, they come into park about eight or nine o'clock. Um, I also said that, um, the Western Avenue Car Park, it was introduced to be a free car park when parking charges originally introduced into Buckingham. There were one on the west side of town and one on the east side of town. The reason why parking charges were originally introduced in Buckingham was not to create revenue for the council. It was to stop people parking for so long and all day in a waitress or Cornwall's Meadow Car Park. What used to happen was people would park there all day and people who wanted to come into the town to shop couldn't park. So they'd drive around and then go off to Milton Keynes or somewhere else. So that's why we introduced parking charges originally. As councillor Stuckey was saying, it was then revised and it was increased from fifty pence to sixty pence, but we got three hours. And I'll be fighting for short-term parking for twenty minutes. And I'll be fighting for short term parking for twenty minutes. Um, it's, it's wrong and I, but at that meeting last year, I was told that they could actually raise. Charges in line with inflation without consultation. Now, it seems that there's been a reversal of that. And now saying there should have been consultation, I don't know. Um, I can only go on what I was told. But I was certainly against the introduction of. Extension the hours and the elimination of free parking on Western Avenue, because all they were doing is have people park on the streets and it's wrong. No, you need, Buckingham has no relationship whatsoever to High Wycombe or Aylesbury or Chalfonte or anywhere else south. We should encourage people to come in to use our, our shops and our retail and our trades in the evening especially and on the Sundays. You know, how many people actually come in? There are not that many shops over in restaurants.
Yeah.
So um I'm totally against what's been done and the way it's been done. Uh, councillor Davies said, I looked at it first and I saw one pound seventy all day. Legally, they are right. It's in the orders that are below what is there. But if you're not used to this, it's easily be confused. I think I really ought to rethink it. Um, because Buckingham and Winslow come to that and the Swanpool, we are not the same as down south. So I support you.
So then next was councillor Try.
Yeah, thank you. I'm totally opposed to this. Oh, putting the microphone away now as well. Um, testing, testing. Uh, yeah, totally opposed to this. Uh, a, one area that um when we did have the review of charges. Was that it's, it had to pay for itself, which I can sort of understand. But now they're introducing a flat fee of one pound seventy, which now has to be policed. Well, that's hardly going to pay for itself, so they're going to have to bring somebody in to um have a look around. And I don't know whether it's my eyes or just an anomaly, but. They're increasing the charges from Monday to Friday to Monday to Saturday. But they're also keeping Saturday, Sunday and bank holiday as a flat fee. So there's a Saturday which has a lap over there. Uh, on this paperwork that we've got. Um, so that just needs clarification. Um, and it's also been said, just to reiterate it, taking the time up to nineteen hundred hours. It's just a joke. I mean, um, people using the town for other activities. Um, it's going to um cause more heartache, which is not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you. Um, echoing other people of course, but I just feel that. There was a carefully worked out local rationale for parking and I think that point needs to be perhaps beefed up a bit in the. In the response that's getting a bit more passionate there. Um, but the other point that I, I don't think has been really mentioned at all, it's rural workers. People live, there's a vague mention towards the end of the rural hinterland. We are a rural area. You know, people coming from the villages to work and changing the faces of the car parking. Um, goes against encouraging people to come in from the villages to work. You don't need to drive in to a car park. We had it all very well worked out locally. Um, and this is just driving a carton of horses, I don't know. Through, through the whole thing. I opposed it. Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just want to pick up on something that councillor Moore, who said uh about the. Free car parking at Western Avenue, um and parking on the actual street. Uh, the amount of roadworks that go on there, uh, this will only exacerbate that just to add to what uh councillor Moore said. Another thing was um vandalism was quite rife on that uh, on that car parking um meter. As well as many others. So if people can't pay for the car park, they're automatically going to get charged on the point that councillor Try said. How we are, how on earth are we going to police it? Thank you.
We then have councillor Collins.
And yeah, I mean, I am totally against this and I've always believed that. Parking should be down to the local councils, not the Shire Council. But it betters belief that they can think a public consultation is. Buckingham advertiser, which not many people read these days because it's so flimsy and not much to it. Or online on their council site, which how many people go on there in the general public? A public consultation they should have had in each area as a full public con- consultation in one of our. Community centres so that everyone could have some input to it. I just cannot believe that they think they are doing the right thing. They're only going to drive people out of Buckingham to Rafferty and Stormy Trafford where parking is free. And there is no shopping there and they're just driving people out to those areas. I know they're not in our Buckinghamshire council, but they can all keep their parking free. They've obviously worked out. How they can do it. I just, and they cannot be. Judged the same, as you say, in the status of county where there are commuter areas. Don't respond anything to like the moss. Thank you. I think I don't have councillor great that.
Uh, it's just a quick one to say, um, in regards to having a consultation on the website. It was actually really hard to navigate and find unless you specifically typed in car parking consultation Buckinghamshire council. If you just type in car parking charges Buckinghamshire or council car parking charges. There were real, 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 real of sites that came up before you actually found the consultation page. And when you actually reached onto the consultation page, there was a link that said, oh, we can have your say. And then it takes you to an interactive map, which was actually really difficult to navigate because I tried to navigate it. And I tried to have my say on it and I found it really difficult to unless I specifically directly emailed in. So in terms of accessibility, and I remind you, a public consultation should be publicly available to everyone. Not just people who know specifically what they're looking for. So again, just another vote to.
Okay, so uh we have a few more people who wish to speak. Uh. And we haven't spoken yet, so that's councillor Stuckey and then councillor Gately.
Yeah, firstly, thank you councillor Moore, just for doing the history, which saves me the history. You're absolutely right. And thank you and councillor Davies for the points you've raised, made around the accuracy. And thank you every member for what they've done. When the point that was referred to about the meeting when a member in South Buckinghamshire raised the point that we should have a charging. Was a meeting that I was in and that was budget scrutiny last year. I went to budget scrutiny this year and questioned the cabinet member because I saw the list of charges which were published by the Buckinghamshire council. And noticed that within that list, it said they were going to go up from sixty to seventy pence. Um, the cabinet member kindly as councillor Cole said that if there was a change in charges at that meeting, which was a public meeting, there would have to be a more. Public consultation with support of you that councillor Cole said. I defer more to that. I penned a cabinet of identities. Um, and um. And, and the, the charges and the discussion about this was in the cabinet pack. Um, but because I scheduled my questions in, in advance, I was not in a position where I could question that. Because of the timing of writing a question to get them into cabinet, because the chairman didn't really. Um, and like them, liked them to be orderly in time, which he's right. So I do think that the ability for us. Where in different, Buckinghamshire council have been limited in challenging it because we don't see the cabinet papers in advance. So you can't plan to question it in the same way as you would. We can write a question. It was freely available. Um, to members, but if you're not in the habit of going to cabinet, which one is? Um, because I go, do I want to follow everything? But I do feel that we're a little thinking and I'm going to carry it and please correct me if I'm wrong someone. I think they stated that the Swanpool was in Aylesbury. Um, um, so. Um, that alone says that the paperwork was factually incorrect in the consultation, because Swanpool's in Aylesbury. Perhaps the Aqua Vale's in Buckingham. Um, so if that's not done, and that shows how much detail. Perhaps was given to the niceties which was mentioned by um councillor Mrs Moore, about the quaintness of Buckingham against the. Other places. And I think there's some consistent feeling that here of that we need to do it. What I would ask um is that we may not be able to challenge the fact that they've done a consultation. Proving that is not a legal consultation might be difficult. What I do think we need to do is because I believe when I listened to the cabinet meeting, which is a public meeting. That that states that they've agreed that those charges will come in after the consultation be finished. I think I'd have to check the timings of these things because timing and legality in facts are difficult. So I think we need to be thinking, how do we resolve this? I think, uh, I was minded up at the weekend. I got to talk to councillor John Barnes, which. Um, because he was involved with myself and Howard many years ago when we were neither as on the district, but we were just town councillors. And we were negotiating parking charges. Gordon reminded me of a very good point that he said. This charging business, we need to negotiate with them. We need to meet them and talk about the actualities of Buckingham. So I think if. So I think what we need to do is agree that we will actually carry on talking to them. But he reminded me that at the nth degree, um, they finally, after discussion, accepted the principle, which I believe Howard, myself and John were meeting. And, and we got um councillor Park at the time of the cabinet member was parking, um, to actually um change his mind. And because Howard and I and John Barnett Town Council met them and sprayed the rationale that this was going to be a negative to Buckingham. And, and that was many years ago in the district council before we joined the district council. So um I think that's where I would go with this. I think we have to. Whatever we agree tonight, we must agree a slight amendment that we wish to talk to them about the actualities of Buckingham. And I think maybe that should be done by Buckingham Town Council, supported by those of us who are Buckinghamshire councillors. Because um it allows that to be a Buckingham Town Council conversation and I would be willing to. Support the principle of that, but I don't think it's right that then we overstep the Buckingham Town Council's members. There's nothing that's been said tonight that's inaccurate. The legality, it can be questioned on one point alone. If you print a document and you don't even recognise that um. The Aqua Vale and Swanpool, uh, that means that, that people aren't consulting on the fact. And if you're in a court of law, that'd probably be enough, wouldn't it? That the fact that you've merged your provided was inaccurate. You'd probably have to re-join and have another hearing. Um, I don't know if that's so, but I would try that if I was the barrister. Um, 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 and I think you might have more views on that. But I do think that the legality in the way it's done hasn't been particularly good. If you're a person who's blind or a person who's got an inundability or an educational disability, which I have, must have. Um, which is dyslexia, these things are really quite difficult to do. And I, I master these things because I'm, I, I struggle myself at times to do these things. But I'm fairly aware that everything according to the Equalities Act, and I don't know whether the consultation was, would have met the test of the Equalities Act. Um, had it taken defined characteristics and that into place. And I think that's the legal grounds that I would suggest with advisement, that, that, that it doesn't state. That it's met the equal, that if they think it's. Met the tests of the Equalities Act, which is, but it should be easily relevant to do. I mean, perhaps councillor Moore, Mrs Moore, who can do it on the Equalities Act, because she must have said, you have lots of people coming dealing with the Equalities Act. And um so I think that's the grounds that I would introduce as a challenge.
Thank you. Councillor Gately.
Yes, thank you. Just a brief point. Um, again, our colleagues in the south of the county might not be aware that even in central Milton Keynes. There are no charges after six P M. So to make it seven P M here is complete nonsense.
Thank you. So there are several people that want to come in again. Councillor Osibogun and councillor Harvey and councillor Davies.
Yes, I think that, well, I, I just wanted to restate that. I am also opposed to the increase. My concern is to the draft we have before us and the accuracy of the information in there. I'll state again that the paragraph that captured legality is not accurate and should be amended. If we decide to proceed with this draft, I will be abstaining from it.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey.
I'm just going to sort of cancel it before we amend it. I'll get a second and we can change the text. So that's easy to do. Um, I want to make just four other points. One is, there's clearly in the information that went out. No impact assessment at all upon the life and community and the economy of the town. Or indeed on the equality issues as mentioned by councillor Stuckey. How on earth can you propose such a major change to the town's economy? As how, you know, without doing that impact analysis, that is just madness. That wouldn't even happen in government then. So I don't see how on earth it would be allowed out of that local level. Um, I did what I could to direct people to the site with the information through legal, you know, the, the, the. Um, referendum, not referendum, the petition that I put up on the council um website. More than forty hundred people have signed it so far, by the way, in less than a week. Um, but I was also directing people to uh, to the consultation pages. Um, obviously I agree that consultation is well and less than what it ought to be. Um, secondly or thirdly, this is regressive taxation. This is people who have to come and park in the town, who have no option other than parking in town because this is where they work. And these people are often on the, obviously on fixed um or low incomes of various kinds and they're going to be punished by an instrument. Decreases, particularly people who have to work on Sundays, although there are a lot of people in town who do that. Not just people obviously in waitresses, but also all the restaurants and individuals around. All those people probably have to come into town and they have to use the parking with their car uh for zero cost. Certainly they're going to pay one pound seventy. And that's, and that's a major, major change for a lot of people. And lastly, I'd say, yes, if, you know, Western Avenue Car Park and indeed other places too, will push people to park on the streets. That will then cause conflict in our town because people don't like to have cars parked outside their houses that aren't theirs or they don't know who they are and so on. Um, and what that will lead towards is parking permits, residence permits and so on. At which point the Shire Council go, touch it, another way of raking in more money from the people who live in the town. This is a dastardly plan and it's going to damage our town dramatically and deserves to be thrown out. Sure, councillor Cole would be happy to accept any amendments um to the, the, the text and so on.
Councillor Davies.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Sorry, I, I was just going to say, I, I believe that the um. Shire Council has agreed to us having some extra time on this as the consultation isn't actually um closed last week. Um, so any, any changes to the very comprehensive, I, I think, um. Um, statement that um Steve has done need to be agreed. Um, this evening and swiftly, um, and bearing in mind that we do have another meeting to um, to, to do after this one. So I would, I would, if there is, if there is any um, any amendments want to be done, I suggest that they, they, they're done quite swiftly. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're right. We are, time is moving on and I think if everybody hasn't spoken yet. Um. Yeah, yeah. Nonetheless, I'm trying to think of how we can move this forward. Yeah, okay, in that case, uh, but I think councillor O'Donoghue hasn't spoken yet, so I think you'll have a chance first.
Thanks, ma'am. Um, just following on from what Dom said really, um, you know, if people were being, um, coming in on a Sunday. Um, public transport is not good on Sundays, so that's going to impact them as well. So as John said about the impact assessment, um, that should factor into it. If they were going to do one, they probably won't, but. That should factor into the public transport. It's a, it's a big deal.
Now, councillor Stuckey.
If, if the amendments that I'm proposing is the question around, um, the cabinet member in his response to me. And the question about the tariffs said that if there was to be a change, that would. And it's, I think it's supposed to record because it's on the response to me, that there would have to be an economic impact assessment. That would be a reasonable question at that point. We haven't had an economic impact assessment. Um, so I think that would be the first challenge, that we, there's been no economic impact assessment. Second challenge would be what councillor Gately lately said is that it is inconsistent. Say to have a consistent policy across Buck to isn't it recognising the, what's going on itself, bucking to bucking. So the policy is inconsistent. And on the simple niceties of the fact that the consultation wasn't accurate and was difficult to understand under the Equalities Act. I don't think it's met the tests of the Equalities Act. Also, that it has the Mexican test of, of clean, what they call good English. In the sense that you wouldn't understand it, which, and also is factually incorrect in the sense that Swanpool doesn't. Um, but aside and now we, those would be the grounds that we would add into councillor Cole so that we challenged the legality. Uh, if councillor Cole thinks that's reasonable, um, so that we can vote on those as changes. I hope that would be enough to. Um, bring Aggie with us, um, on that grounds, um, and if, if those members. And lastly, the, the, when we agree that, we agree that we will carry on discussing with them. Because what happened in the past from councillor Maudie, myself and John Barnett, that we, sometimes there's always a discussion to be had afterwards.
I think we need specific wordings for amendments.
I think that was specific.
I'm not sure.
All right, I'll do it again then. I'll do it again because I think it was legally, legally, whatever, the first point.
What wording do you want to change?
The wording that we changed it is to accept the fact that we haven't had an economic impact assessment, doesn't fit the Equalities Act. Um, the factual documents wasn't factually correct in the sense that it named Swanpool as being in Hoursbury. But it wasn't easily undone under plain English and the consultation wasn't accessible to all. And I think that's, if that can't be any more plain than that, I can repeat it a third time. And if that.
I'll second that.
It depends whether councillor Cole wants.
Where would you like to be? If you want specific amendments, you tell me where and exactly what you want inserted and where, because this has always been planned.
I think the amendment is an amendment standalone amendment, so. We can agree that as members here tonight, or we can vote it down tonight, but we are elected members. Um, and we didn't, and we could change council policy and have members drafted before the meeting, but we'll have to change down in orders for that. And I go, I'm happy to do that. Um, but this is what I've said and I don't, I'm gonna have to repeat it a third time. I think that's obvious. And I forgot that, and it's been seconded.
I think, I, sorry, I think that the, um, the individual parts of, of those amendments. Can slot quite well into the different paragraphs on the thing. So the economy one can have the one about, there's been no economic. Um. Um, and has a statement, um, on it. The one about, um, the le- the legality, where is it? Legality and scrutiny can encompass the, um, the accessibility of the, um. Survey. The survey and what was it? There was something else in that.
Not being written in plain.
Yeah, in plain English, um, and the, um, the accuracy of the information that was in there. Um.
And the factually fact that the, it states that Swanpool's actually now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Was that, was that, is that cover them all?
I think.
I have, I forgot that down, so on, on the legality and scrutiny you are proposing, that we add. That, because we need to make a note of this so that it's, uh, it's in the minutes, so we have a text to vote on.
Yeah, Swanpool one's already in there.
Yeah, it's already in there, yeah.
Yep. So that it wasn't in plain English and that it was difficult to access.
And there's no economic impact statement.
And so that is under legality and scrutiny.
So just, not that it was difficult to access, but that, um, it didn't take into account accessibility needs for people with disabilities.
Okay.
I think that's an important distinction to make.
Lastly was the point that councillor Gately raised, which was a very poignant point. If it's going to be across Buckinghamshire. It's, it doesn't actually follow its own sense because if you can get prices different in Southwales and in Buckingham. To achieve of which, which I think was a valuable point.
Well, I think that's general observations on that, on that one. Okay. Um, let's try and. Recap what we have. So you are imposing, the proposal is that under legality and scrutiny. We add sentences to the fact that it was, that the consultation. Did not take account of the accessibility, uh, of, of accessibility needs. For example.
Under the Equalities Act.
Yeah, under the Equalities Act. And that it was not written in plain English. And we want those added under legality and scrutiny. Yeah. Under economy, we want to add that no impact assessment. Of the, uh, economic impact on the town has been made.
Yeah.
And then. Wear us a bit on the, um. On Buckingham not being the same as.
I think that's gen- general observation.
The general observations that the, uh. Proposed parking charges or parking changes do not take account of the different nature of Buckingham. As opposed to the commuter towns in the south of the county. Specifically that.
Well done.
People do not drive into Buckingham in order to then take the train, but they come here to shop and to buy.
I'm very happy.
Amended for the third paragraph. It has already got that. So it's everybody. Are you happy to not have that amendment?
I'm happy to not have them. Are you happy?
Yeah, okay. So. Do we want to vote on this amendment? I think councillor Osipobin is proposing a different amendment, but maybe because they're different in nature, we shouldn't. Uh, take them into this one by one. So, so we have. An amendment by councillor Southbury for which we now have a wording, seconded by councillor Davies. All of you in favour of these? And, yeah, any abstentions?
Against.
One abstention, uh, one against. Okay. Then councillor Osipobin, I think you are proposing a different amendment.
Yes, um, my, my amendment, I, I know, um, councillor Stockton has been accepted. But what I'll have suggested were two points. The issue of the public consultation, because that's real. And also, um, the reason why I don't support that area amendment is I'm not sure there is any legal requirement for public. Um, economic impact assessment before the change is done. Uh, so the. Amendment I'll be proposing is to amend the second paragraph, whilst deleting the first which refers to the public for public consultation. I meant the second paragraph to say foreign consultation was not why we published it. Or accessible in accordance with the Equality Act. It was advertised in the small ads of the advertiser. No, I don't, I'm just, I'm reading it out. I'm just sure how it's going to be amended. Um, small ads of the advertiser and on the Buckinghamshire council website. On the twenty fourth of January to run from the twenty third January to the eighteenth February. We believe that the responses is therefore likely to be unrepresentative and that the three week response period is too short. And then also adopt this last paragraph which says the changes are due to be implemented on the first of April. Which leaves little time for the council to agree any alterations made to reflect consultation responses. That would be my proposal as a will amendment, which I know this council can surely rely on as what is accurate and legally required. Thank you.
Councillor Southbury.
I think the point worth taking forward. Um, out of all what you said, the one which I think is worth taking forward at the time. To be able to react to it. I think that's a really. But the point that about the public consultation, the fact that the economic impact was response to a question asked in council. And they said if there was a change, that would be something that they'd have to do. So they said that in response, which is public record, they can go back and check that tonight. I'm pretty sure that's what was said. Because it was part of my question, why are you not doing the economic impact assessment? And response was you don't need to do that for a tariff changes. But it might be something you would consider as you're going to change the whole tariff, which is what's happening. So I think that's, was said by the cabinet member, it's public record. Of course, it could have been vibing accurately, which councillor Cole covered. So I think there's nothing new there that, apart from the change words.
Councillor Drepan and councillor Harvey.
Um, just to say that. While I, I feel like adding in the bit about, um, them advertising on the website. It's slightly unnecessary because A, you'd also need to say when they put on the website, so we then have to find out that information. Because we know that it was the advertiser on the twenty fourth. But we don't know when they put that information up on the website, so we then have to go away, find that information out and then come back at which would be a delay. Um, you know, that was just my.
Yeah.
Amendment to the amendment.
Councillor Holden.
I'm going to go second to councillor Osipobin because I want to bring him on board. I want him voting, I want the whole council voting for this. And frankly, I think the words that you've proposed are, okay, I think we can, I can live with that. I don't have a problem with that. Um, it's not deleting any of the amendments we've had so far. It's simply adding to what we've, we've, we've said in the previous amendment. Uh, clarifying the information was put on the, the Shire Council website. Yeah, it was in partnership, people were, were directed together and so forth. Exactly what happened, you see, I mean, I don't get that too much, to be honest. It probably wasn't a date on the twenty third, let's be clear. Um, and we can fless the words to make that, to make that work. But I'm happy to second councillor Anderson's proposal because I think if we, I want everybody to vote for this.
Yeah, councillor Davies.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I was understanding that councillor Osipobin was proposing to, um. Delete the first paragraph of legal, legality and scrutiny. Um, am I correcting that? Thank you.
I think that's.
Okay, is there, now that we have clarified the amendment to, um. The proposed amendment is to take, to delete the first paragraph under legal, legality and scrutiny. And then to add something about the website. Is anybody seconding this? Okay, so there's no second for this one, therefore this does not go to the vote. We have now an amended wording. Are there, are there any further amendments? Or can we go to the vote of the motion on the whole? So that has been proposed by councillor Cole and seconded by councillor Ralph. Can we go to the vote those?
That's with amendment.
With the amendments, yes.
Yeah.
And that is, um. I think everybody, uh, want any, any oppose, any against? Abstentions, one abstention. Thank you.
Uh, no, just, I might just say, this has to be in tomorrow, as does every way. So I'd just like at this point to thank all our staff at council. Very, very happy day tomorrow, getting both these things in, yeah, Buckinghamshire council, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Clive.
Thank you, um. If revision two of schedule one is meant to be their legal document of changes. Oh, it doesn't really work and you could drive a truck through it because, uh, column five says the maximum period for which vehicles may wait. Well, I'm going to pay two pound sixty for over five hours because in column five it says there's no limit.
Thank you.
And if you look at the other, um, rows, they do have limits and limitations on them. So there's a little loophole for you.
I'll do that then.
I think we have, um, concluded this. So. If I may, we will move on to point number five, which is chairs announcement. I do not believe that I have any chairs announcements. Then the next meeting for council, it was the eighteenth of March twenty twenty four. And interim council Monday, the twenty second of April. I now propose that we move to private session.